...in their buildings where we could move students in from sixth grade into those buildings and free up some space either in portables, from the safety standpoint of the strategic plan, or the need for early childhood in some of those higher needs areas. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ray.
Thank you. I think you just covered my presentation, so...
I'm sorry.
My crowd can go home. Thank you, team. In 2007, two concepts emerged out of the work of the Student Assignment Plan, and as Mrs. Godding talked about as well, those two concepts were six-eight, or seven-eight middle, the expansion of the seven-eight middle schools to six-eight model, and of course, the expansion of early childhood. Almost a year ago this month, which is hard to imagine, the Facility Steering Committee used the six-eight grade configuration as part of its planning parameter. That was a year ago. And in 2014, a recommendation was, December 2014, a recommendation was brought forth to transition all middle schools to six-eight, with the exception of King, Science, and Mars. On May 18th, we will be bringing forth an action item where we'll be requesting the recommendation to transition Beverage, Hale, McMillan, Monroe, and Morton to a six-eight grade configuration. The timeline, the modified timeline, is attached to the agenda item tonight. As Mrs. Godding talked about a little bit, what really is pressing with this issue is Beverage and the timeline that's been presented to you as a board on the EdSpecs Committee's meeting to discuss Beverage. So that's what brings us to you tonight, specifically with Beverage. And Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie, my partner in this as well, will be providing some more detailed information about the PowerPoint, or the screen that's up about those space with those feeders, and give a little bit more information on that information that is also attached to the agenda. So with that, Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie.
Okay. Just to walk you very quickly through some of the elements that are contained in this table, and some of the findings that could be gleaned from the information there within. So if you look at the first column, it's pretty self-explanatory. You have a listing here of not only the middle schools, but the feeders that then feed into those middle schools from once they get their population. That is their home attendants area population, as we know. There is also the choice population that enters those schools. So the second and third column start speaking to that arrangement. In the second column, you see for the feeder schools, the number of students who we would expect, and this is for next year, so we have good data on the number of sixth graders that'll be in these buildings next year. The class sizes and the amount of students they promote every year are relatively similar to these. So it's just, it's known good data that we can base our decisions off of for now. And then what you see also in column two, next to the middle school names, are the total number of students if you sum up all of their feeder schools. Moving to column three, that shows you the remaining capacity in those schools into which these students would feed. You will note there are only three instances where the column two number for the middle school and the column three number, the column two is larger, which would suggest a larger number of students moving into the school than the capacity would allow. I can tell you that based on the option percentages, that is, the number of home attendants area students who will attend that school, all of these schools will fit the number of students that we're expecting to transition to them, so long as we are within even close approximations of the number of students who make choice. The one exception is Beverage, and that is a school that's being expanded and not anticipated to have its grade level changed until 1718. Column four are the number of classrooms essentially that would be freed up in the elementary feeders, along with for each middle school, the total number of classrooms then that would be freed up as it relates to feeding those schools from the feeder schools to the middle school. Number five is the pre-K need ranking. You've seen this before you a couple times. This is prioritized based on the demographic needs, so free and reduced lunch percentages, ELL percentages, as well as some equity outcomes, that is to say NISA scores. Moving to column six, we have a projected number of three- or four-year-olds in 1718. This is essentially the amount of need for pre-K, or if you will, the demand for pre-K, if you'll forgive me an economics term. And then you can move, kind of related, to number seven. That's our supply, or how many pre-K rooms are needed here. So finally, you can look at column eight, which suggests the number of portables currently both at the feeder school level, as well as related to all those feeder schools that would be impacted by this change. Are there any questions on the data?
See, we'll start with Ms. Williams. Okay, we'll come back around. Mrs. Fay.
So, column projected three-to-four-year-olds in 1718, how did you get that number?
Census data.
Okay.
Correct.
And then you said it was ranked based on, where's the ranking?
The ranking is in column five, PK Need Rank.
Oh, okay. And that's in, what does that mean, one, two, three, four, five, six?
It goes back to a presentation from March 2014 that our friends from CIA brought forth. Additionally, we talked about it as it relates to the bond work.
You're gonna have to refresh my memory. Yeah.
Indeed. It was prioritization based on the level of free and reduced lunch status for school, their ELL percentages, NISA reading over the course of two years, and NISA scale scores as well. It relates, if I'm correct, to the phase at which that school...
So one is a high priority, six is a lower priority. And then the census data, you don't really have any way of knowing whether or not they actually send their children to a pre-K because they, you don't have any way of knowing that.
We have a, well, I would say we have history and lots of it. We've been doing projections for many years in the research division, so we have a very good idea of the number of students who have historically matriculated into our school system from those projections.
But that doesn't mean that they would send their child to pre-K in that building.
Ah, I see your point. I see your point. Indeed.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know, the Harrison pre-K being the kind of a slow starter as an example, where I think there were eight students the first year we had pre-Ked.
Indeed. I would say pre-K likelihood of them sending their child is based both on will of the parent and need, or space available for them to send the child.
And I would also say, and access to other high-quality pre-K in the neighborhood, they may already have that and it not be a high priority at that particular school. I have lots of other questions, but perhaps other people do too.
When I think, I guess when I looked at this, I saw the ranking of one, two, and three as being, clearly, we don't have all the funding today to do pre-K everywhere, but rankings of one, two, and three being the higher need and certainly a population of families who are looking for that sort of opportunity for their students. And I know Mrs. Kenoki stepped away for a little bit, but I think that can be added to the poverty plan, because that's truly an area that addresses education for poverty students. So recouping poverty dollars in that way may be a way to fund some of that. I think, for me, looking at it, the four-fives and sixes told me it was a way to get rid of some of the portables that were at those particular buildings. So that's how I looked at it in particular. But we'll go back to Mr. Snow. Do you have any questions on this?
No.
Mr. Vargas.
I don't have questions at this moment.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess my question is in regards to the parent that showed up today and was asking, or basically stating that they wouldn't send their kid to Monroe. What do you, how do you try to prevent that? Because there are, I mean, they might stay in the district if they weren't forced into a school that they didn't want to. Is there ability to opt out of that for them?
I guess I would have to ask, did they mean if their child would have to transition a year earlier than expected, or would they just remain in our school system for that additional year, and then they would likely go somewhere else the following year? So is it, we'll go to Monroe but not until seventh grade, or is it, we won't go to Monroe at all? I guess I would...
That they won't go to Monroe at all.
Well, we do have a student assignment plan that we've been grappling with that would provide them a number of other options.
Right. I think that's a, that's a good way to look at that. The current student assignment plan gives them options, and the future one gives them several options. Mrs. Fay.
But not under the current timeline, it doesn't, because this timeline has the sixth graders at Rose Hill moving next year. And so we won't have a student assignment plan adopted until the 2017 school year, which means that, you know, they have to, what it does in particular for those Rose Hill parents, which are ranked at a four for PK need ranking, is it puts them in a bind as to having to figure out where to send their sixth grader, either for that one year, if they don't want to go to Monroe, or to try and opt into some other middle school that they may not want to choose, or if they, for example, let's say they want to opt into another middle school that's close to them, which would be Lewis and Clark. They don't have middle school until seventh grade, so what do they do with their sixth grader? So, you know, I think if you, and I looked at all the data, and Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie sent it to us regarding elementary transfers, because I went to the Rose Hill PTA meeting and listened to their concerns, and they have had a steady decrease. It's similar to the concerns Mrs. Godding has brought us about students opting out of her sub-district. And just looking at the 11-12 school year, they had 58 kindergarteners that year. Those same kindergarteners are in third grade this year, and they've lost 21 students. And then those first graders that year, they've lost 19 students that are fourth graders now. So they are opting out at it because they're anticipating this loss of choice and this kind of way that they feel, and these are their words, that they're being forced by options being removed to go to a school that they don't want to go to. But I actually want to step back from the view of this, you know, one school in one situation, and, you know, bring up the larger point, which is, I remember, I'm glad that you brought up that, Mr. Ray, that it's been a year since we started looking at the facilities, because I remember being at Benson and having a conversation with a couple of different board members that night during that community meeting on facilities, and talking about how I was frustrated because I felt like this process was sort of backwards, that we were trying to make decisions on facilities without really understanding what we wanted to do with the facilities. And I know we were trying to pass a bond, and so we were trying to get as many facts as we could together so that we could pass a bond, and I said, "Okay." But these are questions that I've asked since I got on the board, and they aren't unlike or really separate from the kinds of questions that, for example, Mr. Vargas has asked about strategies for the lowest performing schools, or teacher evaluation, or how all of these things fit together, or even the questions Mr. Scanlon was asking tonight about, well, then if it's not grade retention and it's not social, you know, how does all this fit together to help our lowest achieving students succeed? So when I look at this and see, okay, well, we've got a pre-kindergarten ranking, the question that I want to ask is, how not, I mean, Mr. Ray really hit it on the head when he said it's driven by this, decisions that need to be made about Beverage, but the pre-kindergarten ranking at Beverages are fives and sixes, except for one-three. So why is our priority Beverage when that's not our highest priority pre-K? So I guess what I'm trying to ask in a not a very articulate way is, what, if the priority for, if the impetus for grade configuration is to integrate pre-K into our schools, then shouldn't we focus primarily on the feeder patterns that have the most ones and twos, and make those our first priority, and how does this fit into this overall pattern for how we're going to increase student achievement? And I understand that there's, that there's an urgency because there's construction, but in my four years on the board, there's always a reason that we don't look strategically and craft broad board policy to drive district decisions. And in fact, that was an example that we had from a board member who asked a question at some point during the week about board policy, and the answer was, yes, in an ideal world, we would craft board policy to drive district decisions, but we don't have time. And my question for my board colleagues is, at what point do you stop and say, "We need to make time to craft board policy to drive strategic district decisions?" And that's where I am with this grade configuration. And I know, because I've heard you all, and I've heard people say, you know, you laugh and you shake your head, "There goes Marion again," talking about grade configuration. But it's so much bigger than that. Grade configuration, for me, is not just about keeping sixth graders at Dundee, or providing an opportunity for Rose Hill parents to have an option other than Monroe. It's about being strategic in the decisions that we make as a board, and doing it under our authority to craft policy that directs staff to make strategic decisions, not to address, well, we're in a rush now because we've got to make a construction decision on Beverage, even though it's one of the lower priority pre-K rank. I mean, these things end up being piecemeal, and they end up being in isolation instead of part of the larger picture. So I did try to organize my thoughts, because it is important to me that we start looking at these big things in a bigger way. And I think the last thing I want to say about grade configuration is that I don't want the, the last thing for this commentary period, is that I don't want the district to lock itself into something that is not currently best-practiced in the educational trend across the country, because it's not. And I just read the most recent data that I could find, and actually, where we have been saying for years that it's not grade configuration that matters, but it's the quality of the school. But they're actually finding out now. There's been enough K-8 schools and K-12 schools that they're finding out, it actually does matter, grade configuration. It is making a difference. KIPP, for example, which started out in grade clusters, is moving to larger-scale models, K-8s and K-12s. Our charter school competition and our parochial and private school competition across the country and right here in Omaha, they get that. They get that it's a K-8 or a K-12 model that's most competitive and that parents are seeking. So I want to keep that out there, that we don't lock ourselves into this one-size-fits-all, cookie-cutter standard of K-5, 6-8, 9-12, that I can tell you right now is not the best fit for my kids.
So let me just talk about a couple things. So I know that Beverage doesn't have the pre-K rank need, but if we don't make a decision on Beverage and separating that one out on its own by May 18th, then we can't really move forward with construction on that building, because we need to know what we're going to do in order for the architects to go out and do the work. And there are a lot of portables sitting in those elementary schools in that particular area that could go away, which addresses the strategic plan item of safety. And that's, that's been a concern, and it's been a consistent comment from parents in that area. The other three, four schools that we put on this agenda item, if you look at the Student Assignment Plan, which, no, it won't be implemented, but today, you have the flexibility to make those choices with completes, availability of all of our middle schools, assuming there's capacity. And we certainly know that at McMillan, Monroe, Morton, and Hale, there is capacity at those buildings. So that's why we were addressing those. Those principals have all said, "We can handle the students, and we want to see better vertical alignment from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade." So I think that even though the Student Assignment Plan hasn't been passed, we know what it will look like in general, and, and there's that availability to make those choices. That's why making it as a group versus just picking one off at a time, if you pick just one off at a time, you can't, they don't have as many choices. And this gives parents those choices in a six-eight environment. So that's one of the other issues. And I guess I've had, I can't tell you how many principals and how many sixth-grade teachers say to me, "Please make this decision soon." One of my schools is on here, and in talking to the sixth-grade teachers at that particular school, they have said, you know, "We never have a whole day where everyone is in our classroom all at the same time, except at the beginning and the end, because they're pulled out for band, or orchestra, or math, or various other subjects, and we never really get to teach them those topics." And we'd love to see our kids in sixth grade have science labs that are constructed. I remember when my kids went to sixth grade and middle school and said, "Oh, wow, they have a special tube that takes out chemicals." And they were pretty excited about just that whole aspect of learning in an environment that was structured for that particular class and that instruction. So hence the reason why we put a number of schools on here that have capacity, allowing us to free up capacity in our buildings at the one, two, and three level for pre-K, but also allowing us to potentially remove some portables from the safety standpoint. So, I mean, I guess that's, that's the explanation on that. I know that we will have different opinions on that. Mr. Wayne.
I have a similar situation. Pine Wood lost 30% of their kid, 20% of their kids, and Springville lost 30% of their kids from first grade to sixth grade for similar reasons. But to Mrs. Fay's point, where does this tie into our board policy? Point to somewhere in our board policy that authorizes staff, or anybody, to do this. And that's our main job. Millard's facility policy is three sentences. If we, we can't pass three sentences directing that staff to do X, Y, and Z so it's in our board policy, we haven't even created a master plan. We have committees that are working on building by building without an entire district master plan for our facilities. That's a problem. We can't go school by school unless we figure out the entire picture. I hear board members say, "Get off the weeds." Well, let's create policy. If we go school by school, we're in the weeds. We heard tons of conversations today about programs, about specific individual things, but yet we can't articulate, and those know I hate that word, we can't figure out how to tie that to our own policy. We have to have a direction, and the train that we went to said, "Policy's the foundation." And we don't have a master facility policy at all. We have a bond program going on. We have standardization. We just don't have it in policy. I think we're now going to move sixth grade up. We're going building by building, adding things here, adding things there, but there is not one policy that is directing any of that. I know people say, "Well, you can just raise your hand, and five votes will get you a new policy." But at least it's policy in it somewhere. We can point to it and say, "Here's where this comes from." But I'm asking this board, before I vote on it, if we want to start talking about policy, how does this fit into our policy? I'm not talking strategic plan. I'm talking our board policy. So I just went through our board policy, and I didn't see it. We have to have a facility master plan to do this. The public deserves that. Our board deserves that. We were elected to create policy. We don't have policy around this. I can go one way or another. I know we're eventually going to go six-eight. I can live with that, but I just want us to have policy. And to say we don't have time takes me back four years ago, because they came, and staff will remember, and it was, "We got to get this done. We got to approve it right now because we're on a deadline." And it was always approval after approval after approval. And then the whole board changed, and we were supposed to do something different. We're falling back into the same thing. We're on a timeline. We got to get it done. Let's create policy. There needs to be policy around this. Vargas has talked about policy regarding lowest-performing schools. Marion's talked about policy of how does this fit in. I still don't know what the policy is that guides this. If somebody can point to that, I'd love to have that conversation.
Okay. We'll do some research on policy. We'll do some research on best practices on policy related to grade configuration in other districts, and we'll come back on that information. Ms. Underwood.
Yeah. I actually do think that would be helpful information to have. And, and I also think that, I feel like a lot of the grade configuration stuff is really curriculum-driven. So maybe information that kind of supports the K-5, 6-8, 9-12 configurations, you know, based on curriculum, I think would be helpful, too. I have to admit, this grade configuration thing, just the way that I think, I'm an engineer, I kind of like being able to kind of put things in categories and, and make things uniform. And like Ms. Fay mentioned, she has repeatedly talked about thinking outside the box a little bit. And it has, you know, I, looking at our, for example, looking at our middle schools that are, that are 5-8 and very successful, you know, the ones that we're, we're deciding to not change, I think we have a good reason for not changing those. So, you know, she has kind of opened my mind to thinking outside the box. I guess I just haven't heard, I don't have enough information to be able to support anything other than kind of what, what we're looking at. When this, when grade configuration was still kind of part of the Student Assignment Plan Committee, it's not anymore. We decided to remove that, which I think is a really good idea. But when it was, we were kind of looking at some of the data behind grade configuration. And the one thing that was clear, because we repeatedly heard, "You can make any grade configuration work." But the one thing that was clear is that 7-8 is not good just because of the limited amount of time that those teachers and administrators get with those students. So to me, you know, that's enough information to tell me, 7-8, if that's not good, you know, at least going to 6-8 is better. But I, I do think it would be helpful for the board to have additional information, if nothing else, just to be more confident in the vote that we do make. I am supportive of what's in front of us today, but like I said, I do think having more information would be helpful as well.
I think what we could do is maybe pull back out some of the information we had from the Student Assignment Plan and get that out to staff. I know that we've done that before, but, and if there's anything new since that time. Ms. Merrick, did you have any comments, questions?
Ms. Underwood took a lot of, or Mrs. Underwood took a significant portion of what I was going to say. And that was just, I, I'm hearing a lot of people say, "This is being driven by preschool. This is being driven by preschool." And I think that, that is a part of why we were talking about it. But I also, last year, remember us asking for data, saying, you know, "What are the impacts of grade configuration? Can you show us? Does it increase student outcome and student achievement?" And I remember, like you said, getting the information that really you can make any grade configuration work, but if you can lengthen the amount of time between those transitions. So 7-8, you have a quick transition from middle school, or from elementary school to middle school, two years, and then another transition. And that overwhelmingly showed that that was not healthy for students. I remember that clearly being presented to our board. I did have one clarification question, because, Ms. Fay, I heard you say that we were looking at this for next year, and I think when people hear next year, they're thinking 15-16. And everything I'm looking at on here says 16-17. Yes, that's what the timeline is, if somebody could verify that.
Yes, the timeline is 16-17.
Except for Beverage, 17-18.
And Beverage is 17-18.
So the sixth-grade classrooms 15-16 column is not sixth grade moving in 15?
Correct. It's known data that we have available to us now. We could try to project how many would move.
So it's still a year off of the Student Assignment Plan, which is 17-18?
The proposed modified Student Assignment Plan, not the current.
For Beverage.
For everything.
Well, yes, but it, the, the grade level change would be under the new Student Assignment Plan for Beverage.
Right, but the other schools, it would be a year off.
Yes, 16-17.
Right. Right. So I think we're missing the point if we ask for policy around grade configuration. I think then you're missing the point of how to, policy needs to, I think it's more to the point of what Justin was talking about with a facility's master plan and policy around that. And I think, you know, while I might not vote for it, I would understand better if our policy said that we would direct staff to rank and prioritize the greatest need for pre-K and start creating space in buildings for pre-K, you know, whatever you word that in a concise way, you know, based on that priority ranking, you know, at least then I would understand it. Because I don't understand this, and I can't justify it to my constituents. So, and I, all the data that Lacy shared, I mean, I'm familiar with all of that intimately. I read it a lot. And I'll tell you, it's shifting. There's enough districts that have moved to K-8. The data is actually shifting, so it's been out there long enough. So if we're going to get the whole complete picture, I'd be happy to share with research lots of new data.
So you might want to look at the second attachment, which shows the timeline. Okay, and that helps explain that. Ms. Williams, and then to Mr. Stone.
So first of all, thank you for letting me. I was working through a migraine. It was going to be pretty ugly. Considering the fact that we just heard a presentation, and we were talking about kindergarten students and their social and emotional capacity, so I have a different conversation to bring to the table. I have talked to parents. I've also talked to principals and teachers, but in the last three months, I've had the opportunities to talk to about 20 sixth-grade classrooms, to have a real conversation with them. If you've been in a building with sixth grade in this year, we don't, it's, our today's society isn't five years ago or 10 years ago. We have sixth-grade students that are very mature, that are very young adults. They're restless. They feel like children. They feel like little kids. And they're not little kids. They're adolescent. They're young adults. And the conversation is, just give me some feedback. How do you feel about being in an elementary school right now in sixth grade? Or how would you feel about being in middle school? And I can tell you, in every single classroom, I probably had about three students that said they're not quite ready, but the majority of those students are ready to be in middle school. The unfortunate reality of it is, is that, working with buildings, I see it regularly, is that we have children, our society is, our young children aren't young children anymore. They're not as innocent as they once were. These are children that are exposed to things that I wasn't exposed to until I was in my twenties. That's just the reality of our world. And what happens in those buildings is that those students model those behaviors for K-5 students, and some schools kindergarten head start. And so the reality of this conversation is, yes, there should be policy, and yes, we, you know, there's the pre-K conversation, having more access to early childhood education, but we also have to think about these students that we're talking about. We're so busy talking over them, we're not talking about what's best for them. We're battling up here, talking about policy, and that is our job, but we also have a job to serve our students. And we seem to keep forgetting that we are supposed to be doing what's best for students. And I encourage everyone at this table to go into a sixth-grade classroom in their districts and have a conversation with sixth-grade students. These are very mature young people. They need more than just to be in one classroom all the time. Most of the classrooms are trying to model middle schools, and they're rotating for reading and math and science to keep them moving and keep them focused. And I think by doing that, you also lessen the behaviors that you have in elementary schools. We talk about suspension rates, and we talk about all of these things, but a lot of those very same things could be taken care of if we thought about what's best for these students. So at the end of the day, all the policy that we make and all the conversation we have, if it's not driven by what's best for kids, then I really don't think that the conversation is necessarily relevant.
Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question, just to clear up. They were talking about a facility master plan. I remember we had a group come in and do a study. Has that, is that study done? Is it, or anything like that? I think it was in January that they came in.
Are you talking about?
The facility study.
The audit?
Counsel, great city schools.
Counsel, great city schools.
Oh, on operations?
Yes.
Okay. No, we don't have it back from great city schools.
I think it's going to be back hopefully by the end of this month.
So hopefully by the end of the month. We've been checking with them, and it's just, they're not ready. They're just not back, they just don't have it done yet. So we have been following up on that. Mr. Vargas?
I don't have too much more to add. I don't want to reiterate too much information. I think we can make claims on what side is more important, whether or not we should keep it, we should change it, but I do want to just emphasize this conversation about policy. We've been having this conversation, living in the weeds and sort of backtracking on things that we agree or don't agree with, and it's just telling me we're not spending enough time being strategic and implementing policy as policymakers and letting that drive our decision. And in honesty, being transparent with the community, once we set policy, we set a standard for how we're going to operate and how future boards will operate. Obviously, policy can change, but it does set a standard. And I think that that's the conversation we'll be having from here on in. If we're not, and we come back and we keep saying, why are we not enacting policy? I think there's a problem.
And I noted that. So with that, I think, oh, Ms. Underwood?
So I just have a quick comment on that. I totally get where people are coming from on the policy front, but for this grade configuration thing, I don't feel that I am, as a board member, that I am qualified to say, here's what the, what the grade configuration needs to be. I need information from our experts, from our staff, to tell us first what they recommend and why they recommend it, so that we can craft policy around that. I think that's how the sequence needs to go. And it feels like we're talking about this a little late in the game, because our facilities are, you know, plans are going full steam ahead. Our constituents voted on a bond based on certain grade configurations that came from staff previously. So in order, if we feel more comfortable, you know, making, making our decisions with more information, that's great, but we also need to keep in mind that there was a bond that was voted on based on certain grade configurations. So we've got a lot to sort of balance.
Oh, I appreciate you bringing that point up, and I think that that's why we didn't put grade configuration in the Student Assignment Plan, because that was data, Student Assignment Plan was data that we could really analyze and evaluate and make decisions off of, but we felt we were not the education experts on grade level configuration. And it should come from staff, and I happen to be very fortunate, because I am in a sub-district where the majority of the kids in my sub-district attend sixth grade at the middle school level and are doing extremely well. And I'm very, very thankful for that. I want to be able to see that happen across the district and for other students to be able to have those same opportunities that kids in my sub-district have. So with that, we will certainly, I want to turn it over to Mr. Evans. He wants to make a couple of comments.
Madam President, I still have a comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick notes. Two previous districts I've worked in and boards that I've worked with, we did some research in my last district and put caps on size of buildings, how big our elementaries would be, how big our high schools would be, looked at breaking ranks, NASP, which National Association of Secondary School Principals work. And we built, for example, high schools that never went over 1,000, 750 on middle schools, six, seven, and eight, 550, 600 on the elementary configurations. We built a lot of schools in my tenure there. And that was based on research, and the community supported that. And that's the other piece, too, what's your community expect, which is part of the bond issue conversation that I think I heard from Ms. Underwood. In the district previous to that, we passed a bond issue as well and built multiple schools, including, and this is kind of an interesting piece, too, the board wanted to try a K-8. And so if you'll look at Wichita Public Schools, you'll find that there's one K-8 built in It's still in existence today, still operates. It does okay. It doesn't necessarily outperform the others. That's fine. But it was based on some community desire and desire at the board table, and staff said, gosh, let's do this. It was a part of a bond issue. We had an opportunity to build it. But it's so different, having worked in both school districts where you're a fast-growing suburban, where you're really building a lot, you can really put parameters on it, versus an older school district that has already a lot of buildings out there. For example, if I had my wishes, we wouldn't have a 2,400-student high school. If you look at the research on that, it'll tell you that's not the best practice. It's not. But what are you going to do? We've built those schools. We have space for 2,400 in them. And so we've got multiple high schools that are bigger than best practice says. But what are you going to do? You've built them, they're there, and by the way, Wichita's in the same spot. By the way, when Elkhorn builds, they're not building 2,400-student high schools. No one does anymore. So some of the things that you're dealing with today are constraints that you can't impact. Now, you can impact the 6, 7, 8, and I do think Ms. Underwood's comment on the 7, 8, I just don't think you find support for a 7, 8 configuration in any research. And I think if you talk to staff in this district and community, they would understand that as well, generally speaking. And there's multiple reasons why. Then you can have conversations on whether you want to do something that's different and have in construction, in a new bond issue, a K-8, and give that an opportunity. Wichita did. They still have it. It's still in operation today. Is it outperforming the others? No. Is it underperforming them? No. And folks that want a K-8 configuration, get that opportunity. So those are the experiences I've seen, and there is, I mean, there's a lot of research on it, but you know, there's always a whole lot of other factors on any of these pieces of information, noise in the data that also has implications. And so it's difficult. But I do come back to, I think Ms. Underwood sized it up pretty good. We passed a bond issue with statements we made to our constituents, and I know what I said when I met with multiple groups and what I thought we were, where I thought we were headed, as I met with the chamber, as I met with multiple business leaders, philanthropic groups, and all the groups that I had 200 meetings with. I thought this was generally speaking the direction that I heard. And I know it was a conversation that happened at a previous board table, and maybe that shifted, but that was kind of what I understood, was generally speaking, that it was a 6, 8 desire versus a 7, 8. And maybe a desire to do some other experimental pieces, which by the way, this district's known for that, from the Zoo Program to the UNMC Program, to the STEM Program at North, to the IB Program at Central, to all the other initiatives. You've always been a district, and historically, has wanted to do things differently. And I think you should be applauded for that work, too. But that's my own experiences with two other districts.
Mr. Wayne, if you want to make one more comment?
I don't disagree with all that. And again, I'm not, either way, 6, 8 doesn't bother me, 5, 8. I can support either one. The issue I'm having is the policy around it. I know we've talked about it, we talked about it during the bond, that, you know, we have to develop a master facility plan, and that includes the optimal facility guidelines that our district already has. But it's how do we position that into a bigger conversation that we review every year apart of board policy? And that's all I'm saying. Right now, we're arguing over 6, 7, 8. We argue over this program. We argue over that program, because we're dealing with programs. And if we talk about policy, and we talk about what's best for kids, and we have our policy principles that outlines that policy, then we're not arguing about an individual program. Because if it fits where it fits in our policy, and we all agree this is a good policy, then the conversation moves forward. The reason we're having all these debates is because we don't have policy around it. If you stick to the high 51,000 students across the district on policy, then we won't get into this argument over individual programs, individual decisions. So that's why I want to see a bigger policy discussion.
Okay, and I wrote that down, and we're going to take a look and see what other larger districts do, and we'll be back at the board table next time with that. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie, for being here. And we'll have more conversation about this. With that, I want to move to J-2E, Human Growth and Development Community Parent Input Update, but I also want to make sure that we have a complete conversation on the Career Education update. So I'm going to. Well, okay. All right, so we'll just speed through the next two so that we can make sure that we all are still awake and clear on these topics. Mr. Scanlon?
I know a lot of people have waited, but I think some of them should be tabled, because they are very important pieces, long-length conversations. I don't think we should rush through them. They're very high-profile topics. And I know it inconvenience some people that have been waiting around, and, you know, I think we just would need to apologize for that, but do the intelligent thing and table one or two of them.
Yep. So with that, and I know the Career Education update, I know we've got folks here, and I know you've been waiting, but I would look for a motion to postpone that to the next meeting, and.
I move to postpone the Career Education update until the next board meeting.
So there's a motion by Mr. Scanlon and a second by Ms. Williams to postpone the Career Education update to the May 18 meeting. Mr. Wayne?
I would be inclined to postpone the Human Growth and Development. Not that I think anybody on the board objects to it, but I think all questions should be answered. And I'd be inclined to do a special board meeting if we have to. I just think, we have an update in 40 years. I don't want Ms. Counsel and them to just rush through it in 10 minutes. This is, it probably wasn't 40, but it's been like 30.
So let's do this. Let's go to the motion on the floor and vote on that, and then if you want to come back on the other motion, we'll do that. How about that? So Mr. Ray, roll call on the motion from Mr. Scanlon and the second by Ms. Williams to post, or yes, to postpone the Career Education update to the May 18 meeting, unless. Right. Mr. Stone?
I just wanted to make it known why I'm going to be voting no, because we created this agenda. We sent it out to the public. People took time to take off of work, to come here, and even though it's 10 o'clock at night, we created that. That's our fault. But these people stayed till the end of the day, and it's our due diligence to give these presentations. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Ray, roll call.
Merrick?
No.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Stone?
No.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
No.
Wayne?
No.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
That's five aye, four no.
So motion carries to postpone the Career Education update to the next board meeting. So let's move to the Human Growth and Development Community Parent Input Update. Or did you want to?
No, I checked with Ms. Counsel, and she is ready to go, and I'm okay with that. And I was told that it's more of an update on the community forums and those kind of things, not necessarily an in-depth conversation about the curriculum, so I don't think that should take as long.
That's correct. Thank you.
Saying that, I'll make my intro brief. This is just an update on April 7th Community Forum. The Attached Parents Survey is a reference to the
That's correct. Thank you.
Saying that, I'll make my intro brief. This is just an update on April 7, Community Forum. The attached parent survey is a reference to the last update. And then please note, the timeline that's attached has been adjusted. There will be a full review of published curriculum, piloting, presentation on that. We've even talked about ebook development for this curricular area. That won't be until November, because we have to go through the piloting part with teachers. But for now, April 7, Community Forum. Thank you, Dr. Karen Spencer-Mae, our supervisor of Human Growth and Development.
We wanted to just take a step back and look at the parent survey. And we were very pleased with the results of that, in that parents wanted a comprehensive program. They were comfortable with the topics that we have covered. They have asked us to introduce a few other ones that we haven't, and to use a decision-making approach with some of the more controversial topics like abortion. And then our parents also asked us to take, they wanted to have a more active role in parenting their children with their sexuality education, and we welcome that. And now I'd like Brenda to share a little bit about the Community Forum.
I think everyone remembers Ms. Brenda Counsel. She's with the Women's Fund, and they've been assisting us through this process as a part of the WISE process.
Thank you. President Gadding is away from the podium. So Vice President Williams, Superintendent Evans, members of the Board of Education. I've had the privilege of appearing before you previously to discuss the Women's Fund of Omaha's partnership with Omaha Public Schools in the updating of its human growth and development curriculum through utilization of the WISE method. And that's a method that's designed to implement through phases the institutionalization of comprehensive sex education. I have explained on previous visits that one of the phases of the WISE process is community engagement, parent input, that one of the foundations of the WISE methodology is that there be transparency, and that there be full input and full engagement. And with that in mind, the last time I was before you, I reported on the fact that through the assistance of one of our community partners and stakeholders, we were able to assist OPS in conducting a telephone parent poll, surveying parents in Omaha Public Schools. It was a representative survey. That poll was developed by your research department, utilizing best practices of evaluation, as well as best practices in terms of what is a representative sample. And as Dr. Karen Spencer-Mae mentioned, the results of that survey really aligned with what research is indicating are the best methods for providing for the health and progress and development of young people, particularly with regard to their sexual and reproductive health. It also aligns with what the research has been reporting in terms of what parents and community want to see in terms of comprehensive sex education. And to provide an additional opportunity to hear from parents and community in OPS, after the parent poll was conducted and the survey results that you have been provided with, we were able to assist OPS in hosting a community forum on April 7. Our partners assisted by providing the research presentation, analyzing, assisting in the analysis of the results from the parent survey, which formed the framework for the discussions that occurred that evening during the community forum. And before I go into that with any detail, I do want to take this opportunity to publicly commend Dr. Karen Spencer-Mae for designing that community forum in a way that it maximized community input, parent input. There were over 150 educators, community members, parents who were present at that forum. There were tables set up throughout this space. There were facilitators at each of those tables. Dr. Melissa Tibbetts from the University of Nebraska Medical Center College of Public Health did a presentation on the research, did a presentation aligning the parent survey results with the research, and how they seem to be in alignment, and then used that to frame the discussion around three areas that evening. And that was, number one, what parents and community understood about the STD rates and the teen pregnancy rates in Omaha. Number two, what parents and community understood about the current human growth and development curriculum, and what courses were being taught, what subjects were being discussed. And then, number three, what topics were not being discussed or covered in the current human growth and development curriculum, and whether or not they believe those topics should be discussed, and if so, the best way to address that. And when I talk about maximizing input and engagement of community, I had the privilege of seeing the results of the evaluation. And I know that those evaluation results have been shared with you. I think it's rare where you'll see more than 90% of individuals who participate in a forum who will tell you that they believe their voice was heard, more than 90% of the evaluations that were returned that evening. The people who attended and participated said that they believed that their voice was heard. And even more significant, over 93% said that they believed that their opinions were valued. And I think that's important, because we were addressing some very sensitive issues around human growth and development, and this community's take on STD prevention and teen pregnancy prevention. And with that said, I know that you have been provided with a summary of the comments that were received that evening. And if there's any further indication of the depth and breadth of the community engagement, those comments represent that. I think you've probably got over 30 pages of comments. And these are very definitive comments. People stated their opinions very definitively. And what we can summarize for you this evening, I think that drives a lot of where we will be moving forward, or we're going to recommend moving forward in terms of implementation of an updated curriculum, is, number one, that it was a pretty consensus opinion, and from the community forum, as well as some conversations we've had the privilege of engaging in with the current teaching staff in the human growth and development area, and that is that teachers need additional training to familiarize themselves with new topics, learn how to better present, and to even present in the first instance, sensitive topics, and how to be inclusive in terms of their delivery of certain sensitive subjects. Another thing we learned that evening is that sensitive subjects, like the question of how to address LGBTQ issues, the participants in the forum indicated that the district needed to present those topics, that they needed to be a part of the curriculum, and that they needed to do it in an inclusive, informative manner, and a manner that was protective of students and their rights. Parents also indicated that they would like additional help in providing information to their children and discussing sexuality issues with their children. And that relates directly to some of the research that was shared, that showed that parents in this community don't talk with their children about sexuality issues, and children don't look to their parents as they do in many other communities. And that when you start to drill down and have this open conversation with parents and community members, it becomes very clear that whatever curriculum that is implemented here in OPS, there has to be a strong parent component that provides opportunities for the district to assist parents in gaining the information and knowledge that they need to have these conversations with their children. Because during the forum, the participants were asked, what did they believe the school district needed to do around providing sexuality education? What did they believe that the homes needed to do? And what did they believe community needed to do? And with regard to community, they were very clear in their belief that we have many community-based organizations that have expertise and that are willing to help the schools and families with instruction around sexuality education, and that whatever curriculum is selected and implemented, whatever materials are utilized, that there be a strong coordinated component, so that community, as well as parents, are actively engaged in this process of educating our youngsters and providing them with the information and tools they need to make sound decisions about their sexuality and their health. Now, because of the insights that were gained that evening from the participants that were present on April 7, combined with the information that we received through the parent poll, and from the discussions we've had with teachers during some of the professional development opportunities that we've been able to assist with, it became clear that there was going to be a need to adjust the timeline in terms of when there could be implementation of a newly-developed curriculum, that we would need to look at more opportunity to review various curriculum products and supplemental materials and resources, and that we would have to look at more training for teachers in order to implement that, and piloting those curriculum and materials in a manner in which it would set up for the Board of Education to go through their policy process of adopting whatever the new curriculum was going to be developed as a result of going through this process of reviewing curriculum, reviewing materials, reviewing resources, and providing professional development. And with that said, I will turn it back over to Dr. Karen Spencer-Mae to summarize for you how the timeline has been adjusted, and what that will mean in terms of when we can look to coming back to the Board of Education with a proposed new curriculum.
And just very quickly, in the June meeting, we would like to bring back our standards and some generalizations related to human growth. And then from there, we will start to actually build the curriculum as we need to, and then do some pilot testing in September, October, and then by December, have materials and some new things decided upon. And I just also wanted to say that, you know, I've had a lot of comments from people asking, "Why don't you have a new curriculum up?" Well, we really wanted to use this input from the community before we made any decisions. And it really took a while to analyze everything that we had. But I think we have a really good, strong idea of what this community wants. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's go around the table and see if there's questions, Mr. Snow.
Yes. So who's writing the curriculum?
The teachers will write it.
The teachers?
Yeah. Our initial plan is that the day after the teachers are off duty, that the teachers will get together and start to develop, you know, what are the concepts that we think we need at each grade level. And then, you know, we'll probably go out and look at materials, and, you know, especially when you get to high school, there's no curriculum that's a whole semester of what you need in human growth and development. So we'll pick bits and pieces from different places.
And on that, following up with, and I'm sure you have a comment to that, but following up to what Ms. Underwood said about just research with that, since it's been 20, 25 years, how many years, since we've adopted new curriculum, if we could kind of look outside that box and see what other school districts are size, outside of the, and parts of the country are doing, and how they're implementing their curriculum, and maybe if there's organizations that have already done it successfully, and bring that back.
Right. And that's one of the things that, on the 28th, when we meet with the teachers, we have an expert that's coming in and plans to bring in some different materials from across the country.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
I guess I'm going to defer to staff for clarification, because as I was in discussion with Dr. Kerberg, it was my understanding we were going to look at some of the curriculum that Mr. Snow mentioned just now, and that we weren't writing our curriculum. So that's a shift for me today. So I guess I'll ask for some clarification on that. Have we shifted in that? Are we looking at curriculum that might end up being a curriculum adoption? Or are we writing our own curriculum? Because I thought we were looking for other districts and school systems and what they were using, so.
It's actually the former, not the latter, so let me state specifically. We're going to look at what other school districts have. We're going to look at what publishers and manufacturers have. We're going to determine, do they have a complete package that we can use, or do we adjust it? And that's why we even talked about ebooks. If we need to, we did this once with Science, buy a chapter and have that from McGraw-Hill, another chapter that would fit our content standards, that maybe is from a different publisher. In fact, I talked to Mrs. Counsel. We even talked about using some of your support, national resources, to look at those supplemental materials. What the teachers actually write is pacing guides that allow us to determine the length of time for which we teach things, and when it's taught, and any model lessons that might come from those materials. Dr. Spencer-Mae and I have talked about this previously, but it sounds like we've got more opportunity for conversation as we kind of package this together to make it work for OPS.
If I may add, Madam President, one of the things that we're going to assist the district with, and it was just alluded to, on May 28, we are making available to the district a national expert on curriculum who's going to come in and work with the human growth and development teachers, presenting various samples and examples of curriculum that have been implemented in other districts. One of the issues when you're looking at curriculum, particularly when it comes to comprehensive sex education, you have evidence-based curriculum, and you have evidence-informed curriculum. And you have to be careful, if it's evidence-based, you have to be true to the pacing, and that's what Dr. Kerberg is referring to, that there's a degree of fidelity that has to be maintained with regard to that curriculum. So we're keeping that in mind, so when there's the conversation. I'm glad Dr. Kerberg clarified that. When we talk about what the teachers will be writing, that helps. If we identify sections of curriculum that have been informed by evidence, utilized by other districts, that would be aligned with what the standards are developed in this district, and what the community and the parents have said that they desire, we're going to assist in identifying a curriculum source, for lack of a better description, from which those sections can be drawn, put together with the pacing that the teachers are going to provide. So what the district ends up getting is a curriculum that meets the specific needs of this school district.
Mr. Fergus?
I don't have any questions at the moment. Thank you for the update.
Mr. Scanlon? No questions. Mrs. Fay?
Just that, as I told you all, an email after I came, it was a great forum, and Dr. Spencer-Mae did do a really outstanding job. And I was really impressed with the variety of backgrounds and opinions that were present, and felt that they were heard. So again, thank you for all your work on this. And you, too, Mrs. Counsel. It's been really exciting to watch it evolve.
Mr. Wayne? Underwood?
No questions.
Thanks. Ms. America?
I only have one. Thank you for providing all this information. I think, like Mrs. Fay said, it's been really interesting to read through and see the variety of viewpoints that were at the forum, and it's encouraging that you shared the 90% number. I did have a question to see if we could possibly, even if you just want to email us some links, to find out what other districts are doing in regards to opt-out policies. Because I know that's probably the one most frequent concern that's been brought to me on this issue, is are you still going to have an opt-out option for parents that want that? And whether districts are doing just a blanket opt-out of the class, or if they're doing the, I want to call it an à la carte option, of, you know, "I'm okay with these topics, but I don't want my child attending sessions on these topics."
Ms. Williams?
Ms. America pretty much summed it all up for me. So thank you both for the work that you're doing. It's very important work that needs to be done. 20 years is a long time to get this updated, so you're very appreciated. Thank you.
I heard from a number of people who attended the public forum, and they shared the same comments that they felt like they were heard. And when I looked at the comments, it was pretty clear that they wrote down everything. So great job to the facilitators on that. on that. I too am interested on the opt-out piece, and I appreciated the comment during public comment about posting online. I think that really makes it transparent and probably for some people more palatable when they're concerned about that. So I know there are some families that address some of these topics with their students, but there are also plenty of families that don't, and so I appreciate that. So I look forward to the information that you'll provide for us. When I see the purchase of curriculum materials in December of '15, it makes me think of a comment that I just recently had related to this, to a new curriculum that we'll be adopting, which was, "Thank you for giving the teachers time." So with the purchase of the curriculum materials, the full implementation, then it gives that whole semester and the summer before there would be implementation. So I appreciate that too, just that extra time to make sure we have the information. So thank you very much, and with that, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is committees of the board update, and I will start with the Accountability Committee. Just very quickly, we've had a couple of meetings, and hopefully, Mr. Ray, by tomorrow or the next day, we'll be able to get you a copy of the matrix that we have, he has put together. We took a look at a number of different districts around the country, and we recognize that we're on a very short timeline here to get everything done. So we need to approve a tool at the next Board of Education meeting, and then we will get that tool to all of the Board of Education members, and you'll have from May 18th until June 10th to complete that, and then on June 10th, we'll gather those, and we will have that information then at the second board meeting in June to do the superintendent's evaluation. And then, once we are through with that, we'll take the information that we have, which we have gotten permission from the North Carolina State Board of Education to use their document, which was one of the more complete superintendent evaluation tools that we looked at. Mr. Ray has also gone through and put in priority strategies from the four different work groups, and he's also prepared another document which you will get that lists from page 12 of the strategic plan, is that correct, the right page, I think, all of the different items that we're working on increasing, and the availability of information and when that will be available from this past school year. Once we get through that evaluation, we will work as an accountability committee to put together an overall framework and design principles for the superintendent evaluation, and then tweak everything up and edit and change things, and then we'll move our annual superintendent evaluation to December, which falls in line with many other districts that try to get that done before elections and before a change of board members that happens oftentimes in January of the year, so that the individuals who work directly with the superintendent can actually prepare the evaluation tool. And we'll add other components. So that's kind of a recap of where we're at. We need to approve the evaluation tool and then send that off to NDE so that they have a copy of it as well. So that's it on accountability, unless Mr. Ray has something he wants to add.
Well, I was gonna point out that Research actually did that page 12, that scorecard, but Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie left, so I did do that.
Okay, well, you just go ahead and take credit, even though.
It was Research.
Yeah, we appreciate him for doing that. So thank you for clarifying that. Budget not, it hasn't met since our last meeting, nor has communications or policy has Americanism met since our last meeting.
Yes, I have an exciting update. In the essence of Mr. Scanlon, I will go quick. Previously since 2000, we have not adopted a new social study curriculum. The current recommendation and best practices is that we're supposed to do it every seven years, obviously 2000, a little bit longer than seven years. To put it in perspective, our books do not have anything about 9/11 and a lot of other things, so it's time to update it. So the process that was used is we had a social studies leadership committee, they went out and talked to a whole bunch of vendors, and I want to thank Barry Thomas and Dr. Kerberg are talking them. But we had review committees, we had pilot teachers for every grade level, and we had cross-sectional as far as like US history, we had an African-American group to study that impact, to make sure that there was cultural relevance and cultural diversity. We gathered data, when I say we, they gathered data, they evaluated the curriculum, they contacted different publishers, they had a whole bunch of curriculum days, they talked to, again, all the pilot programs and all the pilot teachers to go through everything. But what I want to most mention is that we engaged the public. We had two public viewings, and during the whole time through December through now, parents and individuals could check out the books at the tack building, but they did have two public meetings here in this building, which the public came in and reviewed the curriculum and gave feedback. Now that the piloting process is over with, the Americanism Committee is recommending that a $2.5 million expenditure be created in May, the next board meeting, we'll ask for a recommendation, and part of it's gonna, the reason why we're gonna do it in May, is because not only did they go through all of this, and this data is actually connected to our e-meetings, this handout that I got, just told you all the information, the cost breakdown and everything like that, is because we'll allow for six weeks to eight weeks for the books to come in, to give them out, to distribute to teachers and staff, and spend early, late July, early August, walking through it with people to start implementing into the fall. So we had a productive meeting today, and we will be coming back with a recommendation for a social studies textbook adoption, May 18th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Student Assignment Plan?
If you have any questions about the social studies email from now until May 18th, because we want to make sure that we can answer all your questions for the adoption, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Student Assignment Plan?
Yeah, so real quick, we had, of course, our board workshop last Thursday on the student assignment plan. Community meetings have wrapped up, there were 14 meetings that took place. Just a reminder on the schedule, 2016 to 2017 is the communication and selection year, and then 2017 to 2018 will be the implementation year. I won't go over everything we talked about at the workshop, because I don't think there's any need to do that. If the public wants to know about it, they can, of course, look at the podcast. And then just a reminder for the board, similar to what Justin mentioned about the vote on the 18th, we'll have a vote on May 18th for the student assignment plan, so if anyone has questions on anything leading up to then, let us know. But we will be ready, after working on this for a year, it's exciting to think about coming to the May 18th board meeting, ready to vote on it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move legislative to the end, if that's okay, because I know Mr. Lindsay's here, but let's just quickly, construction manager at risk, was there any of those meetings?
The only update, and this was in the reports, that the recommendation was made to work with J.E. Dunn for the PANKA, CM at Risk, based on all the qualitative and quantitative scores from the selection committee, that's the recommendation from the district and from the team.
Great, thank you. The Specialty Schools Review and Recommendations Committee.
So we were able to have our first meeting last week, the days are running together these days, but we're really just, as we're just first meeting, we're really talking about what's the purpose of the committee, really talking about some of the data that we need to look at and really get familiar with. We don't want to do a data dump, Mrs. Fay, as she brought very forward in the committee, but we're also, I've also asked Research to start sending us the information so that when we meet again, we really have some meat to talk about. I would still like to kind of do, as we did in the student assignment plan committee, is kind of get a vision for what we would like to see in the committee, and so that will come from the committee, Mrs. Fay, Mr. Vargas, and Ms. America, so that's something that we will be working on. But as we get more into the details, we'll definitely be working further and have something to bring back to the whole board.
Has there been a CBAC meeting since our last board meeting?
Yes, there was. I was a little bit late getting there. Did anything I missed at the beginning?
Nope, you were there for all the reports.
Okay. We had a conversation about the bond projects, there were some questions raised about the high percentage of contingency planning, both in the program and the construction contingencies, that they were up around 23%, 24%, and some people had raised concern that that was higher than usually, maybe anywhere from 10% to 15%, 17% contingency plan. We discussed the, we don't want to get into the belief that we're setting aside money for projects that are in the second phase, because that's what has been raised by some of the programs earlier on in the first phase of the bond, and trying to make sure that we, that we address that earlier and stay on top of that, because we don't want people to get a bad feeling for the first, like they got left out if they were earlier on in the first phase of the bond. So we're talking about addressing that, and also I think we'll maybe next, well, this month, we have another CBAC meeting, and possibly after that one, we'll ask to have a member or two of the CBAC committee come and present to the board for their point of view and their take on the committee.
That's great, thank you. Party-based budgeting, no update there? Code of Conduct?
There hasn't been a meeting since our last board meeting.
Okay, thank you. With that, is legislative an action item, or is it an information item? Okay, so unless he's got something for action. Okay, Mr. Lindsay and Mrs. Fay.
I guess we have the possibility of an action item, but I don't think, and it's not on the agenda as an action item. So we met last Thursday in a conference call, and I know, did you just leave? They're still there, or are they, did they wrap it up already? Already? Did they?
The legislature, yeah, no, they've got, they're on day 75 out of the 90.
No, I meant today, as far as.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, not that this meeting's going long, but I was able to adjourn a late session of the legislature and drive back.
And still make it here, yes. So why don't you just give an update, Mr. Lindsay, why don't you just give us an update, although we do anticipate an action item.
I don't think there'll be an action item.
Not today.
Not yet, but there will be one.
There will be one.
Yes. And if it's okay, I'll go ahead and report on what was discussed at the legislative committee, and then update it in the couple of, two legislative days that have occurred since then, because there's actually been quite a bit of activity in the last couple of days. First, dealing with OSRs. Last time I reported, we thought that we would have language sometime shortly after the last board meeting. It ran into a snag over, primarily over the question of the role of the state treasurer as the person in between, the person who'd receive the payments on behalf of the Nebraska Investment Council, they've been dealing with that, that snafu. We were also dealing, continuing to negotiate some items that the legislative committee discussed a couple of times in conference calls. Those appear to have been, what we appear to have language now, that the committee will, that the Nebraska Retirement Systems Committee in the legislature will be asked to vote on. We just received that language, I think after this board meeting started, I think it was a little bit after 6:00, so we have not had time to analyze it and think, because there's some technical stuff in there, including an adjustment in the way interest rates are changed for whether it's buying service or other things, that I think council needs a little bit of time to analyze that so that they can advise you, and that is the action item that's sometime in the very near future, that the board will be asked to take a position on. It is at the point, I think, where I think this board's gonna have to look at it and decide as a package, is this package better off for OPS and its employees, or is it worse off? And I think that's the, I think a lot of the back and forth on negotiating, because of the fact the legislature's time is running short, that is probably at or near an end. Like I say, that language is in the hands of council, and I think you would expect to receive some advice from them in the very short term. Moving to the learning community, the learning, the Education Committee of the legislature met to consider the learning community compromise that had some elements of the superintendent's plan that this board voted on back in December, January, but it did not include all of those points. The primary thing that was missing in that compromise was any dollars for poverty or ELL. It did have a suspension of the common levy. The Education Committee met, voted on that, it failed to be adopted on a three to two to three vote. Discussions were slowing down at the legislative level, but the learning community superintendents met, and I, today I believe, and I would defer to Mr. Evans for any report on that.
I think the conversation's very similar to what we've had before. You may have noticed the World Herald did an op-ed where it discussed the learning community and really kind of the history of the whole poverty ELL piece, which is some of the genesis for what led us to where we are today. But in essence, without the poverty piece, the legislative committee has been pretty clear that they did not want to move forward, even though most of the parts of the superintendent's plan were approved. So I think there's some disappointment from the superintendent group that there hasn't been an effort to put any additional funding for poverty. We've talked about a 5% phase in, moving up towards the 45% state average with free and reduced, but we've not heard any movement towards that, and our legislative committee, I think, has been pretty clear that without movement there, that we're still the same spot.
The, there was some discussion on the floor today on LB 525, that was the Department of Education cleanup bill, the, there was some discussion, basically a little bit of a history of the learning community, how it came about with a relation back to what, maybe some of the divisiveness that was around at that time, a reminder of that. The committee is likely to, well, the committee may meet again to consider LB 528, that's the learning community proposal, and we expect to see some of that, but we may see that in the next two or three days. That moves us into, speaking of LB 525, that's where the debate took place today. LB 525 is a department cleanup, two things happened, one, very important, OPS, the poverty, poverty dollars correction, or the penalty for poverty plans, was adopted, that's Senator Cook's, LB 509 was adopted as an amendment to 525, and then Senator Klowsky had LB 343, a version of LB 343 amended into LB 525 as well. That's the bill that deals with career academy, dual enrollment, academic program of excellence with additional dollars for those. That amendment does include an appropriation of $2 million, not in '15, '16, it's out in '16, '17, to fund that. And then finally, LB 513, which is a bill introduced at the request of OPS to allow leasing of school district property, was placed on consent calendar last week, advanced to select file, we believe it'll be on the agenda to seek advancement to final reading, believe that will take place on Wednesday of this week. place on Wednesday of this week. We, last time we reported, we, was our hope that the bill on eminent domain would be, make it to consent calendar as well. That did not happen. It was deemed that the, not our bill, but the subject matter of eminent domain, given some other discussions of eminent domain, was to touch a topic for consent calendar. And that, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? When, when you made the comment about OSRs, are you talking, and you said this board will need to make a decision sooner than later, is that May 18th, or do we need to kind of plan for a special board meeting?
I believe you should probably plan for a special board meeting.
Okay. All right. So I'll work with Mr. Ray, and we'll get out a time, some different times, and see if that would work. Early next week, or do you need something?
I think early next week would work. I'm thinking through the timeframes, but I think that would work.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you so much for being here for a late night, when you've been in Lincoln for late nights. With that, there is a receipt of reports, the community eligibility provision, the CEP update is there. And Ms. America has a quick question?
Sorry, just because I've had people ask me questions already. Is there a way that we could get the average daily participation data for last year during the spring semester, so you could have a comparison to see if there was an impact on the number of students participating?
Yes, we can.
That would be fabulous.
We've got lots of data.
Oh, we love data.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. With that, Ms. America?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, legal advice, and pending litigation.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
So, motion by Ms. America, second by Mr. Wayne. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, legal advice, and pending litigation. Mr. Ray?
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 11:04 PM.